Good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Reginald Lewis Auditorium of the Princess Margaret School, and also I'd like to welcome those joining us by the online meeting platform for the second in the series of town hall meetings on vaccinations and testing. I am Brian Rees, the Chairman of the National Advisory Committee on Occupational Safety and Health, and I will be your moderator this evening. This evening's town hall meeting will be again facilitated by senior members of government from various ministries, the labour movement and the private sector, who I will introduce to you shortly. However, before we begin, I would like to ask you to please stand for the playing of the National Anthem of Barbados. Please be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin, I would wish to start this afternoon with a safety moment, where we inform you of the evacuation procedure for the Reginald Lewis Hall. If at any point in time we are asked to evacuate from this auditorium, you would be directed by the Ministry of Labour staff to the door at the rear of the hall, the exit at the rear of the hall, and to my left, if you look behind you, at the rear of the hall, to my left, and from there to the open playing field behind the auditorium, where you'll be further directed whether to evacuate from the location, or if the situation becomes safe again, whether you can re-enter and we may recommence the town hall. At the meeting of the Social Partnership on the 27th of July 2021, the Government of Barbados, the labour movement and the private sector agreed to establish these opportunities in a town hall format for a discussion on the matter of vaccinations and testing. This is an opportunity not only for us as citizens of Barbados to ask those burning questions which will guide our personal decisions on the vaccine, but also, and importantly, it is an opportunity for us to share suggestions and ideas. It is a chance for us as Barbadians to show the world viewing us, democracy and governance in or by inclusion in action. It is this style of problem-solving as a community that is the basis of our well-ordered and disciplined society. Tonight, we are joined by senior members of the Social Partnership and also the technical staff of the various ministries, and I will in due course be introducing many of them. And as we all know, we are led this evening by our Prime Minister, the Honourable Santiya Bradshaw, MP. This evening, we will also be facilitated by the Honourable Wilfred Abrams, MP QC, the Attorney General, the Honourable Colin Jordan, MP, Minister of Labour and Social Partnership Relations and members of the Labour Department, Lieutenant Colonel, the Honourable Geoffrey Bostick, MP, Minister of Health and Wellness and his technical staff. We're also joined by members of the labour movement and members of the private sector as well. So you're more than encouraged to ask questions of all of the members of the Social Partnership. Government sets the policy, but the Social Partnership, as the name suggests, participates to ensure that we are all involved in the decision-making process. We will commence this afternoon's presentations with a welcome and introductory remarks by the Honourable Santiya Bradshaw, Prime Minister of Barbados.
Good afternoon to ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon to the online viewers. Thank you, moderator. Let me first of all welcome you to the Princess Margaret School. I'm pleased to be here, certainly as it is one of the educational institutions that falls under my substantive portfolio. And I want to, at the outset, indicate to you that we would all have wanted to be in the audience with you, but as you can appreciate, the way in which some of our schools are structured in terms of the school halls makes it sometimes a little difficult for us to have that type of engagement. So we've tried to make sure that we have as many spaces for the general public, because we know that there are some persons who want to come personally here this evening to be able to speak with us, and we also have facilitated the online environment as well. I would have said at the outset of these consultations that the Social Partnership at its last meeting would have indicated that the issue of vaccination and testing is so important to this country, and in terms of helping us to make a decision as to how we proceed, that it is important that we consult. The truth is that Barbados has proudly boasted a social partnership, and as we're seeing across the Caribbean region, others are making decisions in a completely different way. And I think that it is to our credit that we can engage in this type of forum, that we can allow all ideas to contend. There is really no right or no wrong, but in truth and in fact, this is an opportunity for you to share your views, for us to also have persons who are medically trained as well, and certainly persons from labour and the rest of the private sector, to be able to answer some questions, but also to share their perspectives as well. As we've said before, this helps us to be able to make decisions in relation to vaccination and certainly in relation to testing. And so I hope that we can be respectful of each other in this forum, that you appreciate that we are not here to preach to you, but instead we are all here to listen to the ideas, because that is how thus far we have been able to make decisions in a meaningful way for this country, and long shall that continue. So this evening, as we start the second series of consultations, I invite all persons, both here physically and certainly online, to be free and open with your questions, but also to be respectful in the way in which we treat each other. I wish you all an enjoyable evening.
Thank you, Madame Prime Minister. Next, we will be having a short presentation by the Ministry of Health and Wellness, which is entitled "Let's Talk: Reducing the Risk of COVID-19 in Barbados". This will be presented by Dr Arthur Phillips, Senior Medical Officer of Health. Dr Phillips?
Thank you, thank you, and good afternoon. This is "Let's Talk", part two, as we continue in this series to provide context for the discussion that we're having around, in particular, vaccination and testing. So this presentation seeks to provide some information about how COVID is spread, to speak about the situation in Barbados with a bit of international context, and then spends a little time looking at what vaccination and testing can offer us in terms of combating COVID. What I certainly want to do on behalf of the Ministry of Health team is to thank all of those who took part in the first meeting. And the presentation has been adjusted to meet some of the specific informational needs that were expressed at that meeting. Of course, we have the challenge of balancing a short presentation with answering questions, but we will manage that, and I hope at the end you'll say that we managed it well. So just as a reminder, COVID is something that we've been dealing with for a while now, not just internationally, not just far away, but in our region and in Barbados. And certainly, you can get a feel of what is happening around the world when you look at various sources. One of those credible sources that we tend to reference is the World Health Organisation, and their daily dashboard pulls information from around the world and synthesises that and presents it. And currently, we have over 203 million persons who've been infected, confirmed as infected, and more than 4.3 million deaths, unfortunately. Locally, we've had 4,496 cases and 48 deaths. If we look at these, the colours in the graph, you get a feel for what's been happening in terms of the cases, and this has been adjusted to cases per 100,000 population, expressed in a couple of different ways, and then the green line are deaths per million population over 14 days. In short, what we're speaking about here, starting with the outbreak at the end of December, is that we have had peaks and troughs in terms of the cases in Barbados, and we are currently coming down, I would hope, from one of those peaks. Again, if we look at what's been happening in terms of the outbreak that began at the end of December, beginning of January, in terms of our positivity rate, which speaks to the percentage of the samples that are positive, that would have peaked in February, around mid-February, and has sort of come down. The guiding idea around positivity speaks to a 5% threshold that indicates that if fewer than 5% of your samples are positive, then you're probably doing adequate levels of testing, other things being equal. Of course, it has to be interpreted in the context of who you're testing, et cetera. So our positivity is well down below 1% currently, and the cases, these daily cases and seven-day average, that is also down. However, as we have seen around the world, and as we would have seen in our early models that predicted what would and did happen, our colleagues at the University of the West Indies have provided projections of what could happen if we were to have significant spread without appropriate measures, and then even if we were to have appropriate measures, the numbers of cases that we would have, which we are sharing there, in terms of modelling an alpha outbreak, alpha variant outbreak, and modelling an outbreak where we have a mixture of alpha and delta. What I want to emphasise here is that with just a small cluster of cases and without appropriate control measures, we can become overwhelmed. Now, COVID is no respecter of persons. When you think of COVID, you can think of any race, any age, anyone can be affected by COVID. And not only can anyone be affected or infected, but anyone can experience negative outcomes. Yes, there are particular groups that are at risk for, or more at risk for severe illness, but anyone can be infected and anyone can experience negative outcomes. Those who are most at risk for exposure to COVID would be those who are in frequent contact with individuals who are ill, and those who are in frequent contact with persons who are coming from places where there are high levels of cases. The risk factors that have been documented internationally, and we have also seen in our local context, with the exception of pregnancy, these risk factors significantly increase the risk pregnancy. There's a star because there's emerging evidence to suggest that COVID in pregnancy may increase the risk of pregnancy-induced hypertension, and it may increase the risk of stillbirths. But what we want to emphasise here is that given the makeup of Barbados, given our aging population, given our high level of non-communicable diseases, the spread of COVID in our population can result in significant negative consequences, because we have a large proportion of our population are at risk for more severe illness and negative outcomes. Now, there are a variety of measures that we've been talking about as we talk about controlling COVID, and we, on the next slide, I'll talk about them in terms of nets or layers, but we continue to emphasise because these measures work best together. The more measures we have in place, the more likely we are to be successful at an individual level and at a community level in reducing our risk of COVID and its complications. So here is the concept of cheese. Maybe nets might be a more contextually appropriate way of presenting this, but the idea is that each layer, no layer is perfect, no layer is a silver bullet in terms of shutting down COVID. And our best chance is by deploying all of the measures, the personal measures, the community measures, all of these measures, whether we're talking about physical distancing and masking, or whether we're talking about vaccines and messaging and quarantine and isolation, all of these measures together give us our best chance of controlling COVID. Now, vaccination is something that we are familiar with, something that we have a history with. The Caribbean has done well as part of the Americas region, and on its own in terms of using vaccination to control illness, and we were able to eliminate polio, we were able to be declared free of measles and rubella. We've been able to do a lot, but the reality is that if we don't use the measures or if we don't have the measures available, the threats are there. And if we think back just a few hundred years to one of our quote-unquote "developed" country friends, if we think about the UK in the 1600s, 30% of children were dying before the age of 15, most often because of vaccine-preventable diseases. Yeah? So immunisation offers us a tool, a net, a measure in our arsenal of dealing with COVID. One of the topics that tends to come up when we talk about the vaccines being available and being safe and effective is the idea of how were they approved so quickly, and what is this business of an emergency use authorisation, or similar terms used by other regulatory authorities, like an emergency use licence. But in short, what this speaks to is a process of ensuring, in short, that something is safe and efficacious while expediting its availability because there's a significant threat. And that is what FDA, WHO and other regulatory authorities have done, and that is what our local process for looking at and deciding which vaccines would be available has done as well. As part of that process, there is continued monitoring, and you would see on your screen vaccines that have been approved for use internationally as well as locally. And locally, we have a mechanism that helps us to monitor what is happening in terms of the safety of the vaccination, so that we can be assured and we can assure others that what we are doing is working in the way that we expect and intend. So the Adverse Events Surveillance Committee meets and it looks at submissions. These submissions may come in by various means: phone calls to the drug service, submissions through their forms, submissions through private practitioners, submissions through public physicians saying something has happened to someone who has had a vaccine, it may be related, here's what happened, here's the information. And that committee reviews that information, and we are satisfied that out of over 180,000 doses administered in Barbados to date, we have only had 442 adverse reports, and of these, three were seen as being moderate to severe and potentially being connected to the vaccine. And this is similar to the sort of picture that is seen around the world. One of the things that is, I think, very important in relation to the COVID vaccine is that the reality is, in the relatively short space of time, more COVID vaccine has been administered than any other vaccine in the history of the world, because we're essentially offering and administering this vaccine around the world. So over a billion doses, 1.2-plus billion doses of this vaccine have been administered, so we have a lot of information about what happens when people get this vaccine. So we have information about safety, we also have information about how the vaccines work. And what we know is that being vaccinated reduces the risk of infection, reduces the risk of severity of disease, reduces the risk in connection to that with the need for special medical interventions like intensive care, reduces the risk of death, reduces the risk of transmission of disease. And in the wider community context, having persons vaccinated reduces the risk that the health system and the wider systems in the country may be overwhelmed. And we do have a health system that can be overwhelmed, a system that in some ways has shown itself to be fragile in the past. So what has occurred in terms of Barbados' experience of obtaining vaccines? We have gotten vaccines from various sources. We have heard our Prime Minister speak on various occasions about the challenge of obtaining vaccines, but Barbados has been diligent in seeking and obtaining vaccines and making the vaccines available, and we've had vaccines from India, the Government of India, through the COVATS facility, from China, et cetera, and we've been able to make these vaccines available. And we are looking forward to other vaccines being made available maybe later this month or early next month. So let's talk a bit about testing. So testing is another layer in our layers of nets that helps us to reduce the risk of vaccination, the risk of COVID, and how does it do this? Testing can be offered in different ways or in different settings to different groups of persons for different reasons. So we may be looking at individuals who've been exposed to someone that we know is positive, so we're testing primary and secondary contacts. We may be testing individuals who've travelled from somewhere where the rates of COVID may be higher than they are here, and we're checking to make sure and to reduce the risk that they're importing COVID into Barbados. We may be testing individuals who are ill to make sure that what they're ill with isn't COVID, so we can offer them appropriate treatment, and we can appropriately manage those who have been or could potentially be exposed to them. And we also offer testing to individuals who may be curious or worried. We make testing available because testing helps us to have a sense of what's happening and allows us to take appropriate action based on the results of the tests. And we use a variety of tests for different indications, but certainly the polymerase-chain reaction test, which tests for the genetic material of the actual virus, is the gold standard, and this is the test that we use in our lab. This is the reference test, this is the most accurate test for COVID that is available, and the false positive rate is estimated to be somewhere below 2% in most cases when these tests are done properly. The rapid PCR test can be offered in certain contexts, particularly when the person that you're testing is low risk and you have the appropriate setup to do the and you have the appropriate setup to do the test in a way that that it is likely to be most accurate. And then the rapid antigen tests are most accurate when done on individuals who are actually displaying symptoms, these tests can be done quickly. It sort of reminds you of a pregnancy test in terms of what it looks like. And and we deploy those tests as as needed as well. So that's testing, a very quick snapshot. But what I want to do is summarize and then move on to some of the themes that came out of the first town hall meeting. And then we will open up for the the full question and answer. So what I want to emphasize is that COVID presents a significant threat to us, not just as individuals, but as a community. And that each of us has our role to play in reducing risk to ourselves and to the wider community. And there are a variety of measures that that are available to us in in this in this effort. And vaccination and testing are two of those measures that have an important role to play. And and Ministry of Health certainly will continue to advocate for all of the measures being available so that we can have the best possible outcomes. So one of the things that that would have occurred at the last town hall meeting is that the sessions were attended not only by persons in the hall, but there would have been persons attending through through various means. And we've been able to to capture some of the themes and to distill a few questions from that first meeting that we just wanted to to sort of tick off with some simple answers before we go into the fuller question and answer session. So I'm just going to go through a few of those as as we wind down. So one of the things that we we see people asking in different ways is, if I am vaccinated, can I still contract COVID nineteen? And the the simple answer is vaccination reduces your risk of contracting COVID. It reduces your risk of having symptoms, of having severe disease, hospitalization and transmission to others. But yes, you can still contract COVID nineteen. But the important thing is vaccination reduces your risk of it impacting you and impacting those that you may come in contact with. So that sort of answers question two as well. If I am vaccinated, am I less likely to transmit COVID nineteen than an unvaccinated person? And the answer is yes. What will being vaccinated do to my body in the short term or within weeks of having the vaccine? And and in short, what what being vaccinated does is expose your body to recognizable elements of the virus so that when you are faced with the virus again, your immune system, over that that first period of being exposed to the vaccine, would have started to develop a response, started to develop a way of shutting down and and blunting or or eradicating the negative impacts of the virus on you. Now, vaccination can come with, as with with any immunization, can come with some mild effects in terms of pain at the injection site, itching. Some persons have flu-like symptoms as well. These tend to be self-limiting and and go away quite quickly. And as we would have shared in terms of the the local monitoring of what's been happening after vaccination, we are we are quite satisfied that the level of of any adverse effects is extremely low. What will being vaccinated do to my body in the long term? Essentially, it will prime your immune system to be able to respond appropriately to the virus if and or when you are exposed to it in the future. Is the Ministry of Health and Wellness recommending that I be mandated to get the vaccine? And the short answer is no. But the Ministry of Health, in 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 understanding that the vaccine can significantly reduce your risk and also reduce the the risk of the wider community, is encouraging vaccination. Why is the Ministry of Health emphasizing the risk of getting the virus? Because the risk is real and the risk can affect any of us. What is the benefit of being vaccinated now if there are new variants? The benefit is that you will have whatever level of protection that vaccine gives you against the variant onboard as opposed to waiting for something that may come and you be unprotected while while the while you don't have a vaccine onboard. Question, what is a breakthrough infection? In short, a breakthrough infection is an infection that occurs in somebody who is vaccinated. And are PCR tests accurate? And as we would have mentioned, PCR tests are the gold standard. But as with any investigation, there is the potential for a small level of false positives, which would be what we're concerned with, or false negatives. And then are all vaccines equally effective? And I would say all vaccines that are approved are useful in reducing your risk of COVID. Vaccines do have slightly different profiles in terms of their effectiveness against different variants, but all of the approved vaccines are effective. So that is what I wanted to share as as an introduction, as a setting of the scene. And we thank you, we look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Phillips. Now, this decision to vaccinate, to test, the whole concept of the COVID nineteen virus is a multifaceted and multidisciplinary matter at hand. But however, we still have to, I guess you could say, start with the health aspects. And therefore, we've brought with us today the senior technical team from the Ministry of Health to assist with some of those questions, though we expect the suggestions from you to be rather broad and all areas of this issue to be dealt with. So allow me first of all to introduce some of those members of the Ministry of Health who have joined us this afternoon. I would start with to my right and next to Dr. Phillips, the Chief Medical Officer of Barbados, Dr. Kenneth George. We also have after Dr. George, Mr. Alvin Hart, who is a coordinator of the Quarantine Facility for the Ministry of Health. We are joined to my left by Dr. Barry Ward, who is a Medical Officer of Health. And to his left, Dr. Francine Bowman-Jones, who is also a medical officer as well of health. We have as well with us Dr. Linda Williams, and she represents the Barbados Association of Medical Practitioners as president. And along with Dr. Williams representing the labor movement, we also have from C2SAV in the audience, Mr. Cedric Merle, who is a past chairman of the Congress of Trade Unions and Staff Associations of Barbados. We also have with us Mr. Carl Leach from the Barbados Workers' Union, who is the HR Office Manager. Joining them from the private sector agencies, we have Ms. Sheena Mares Granville, the Executive Director of the Barbados Employers Confederation. So we have quite a number of persons here who are all willing and eager to engage with you and to hear your suggestions. Our duty really as a panel is first and foremost to listen, to receive from you, the public in attendance and those who are viewing online, your suggestions and ideas on this topic. It is an opportunity for the social partnership to be guided by you. You are the people who benefit from this, and therefore, we wish to be guided by you. The format that we will be taking this afternoon will be that we will have here in the auditorium a microphone, as was mentioned by the Prime Minister earlier. The space within which we are operating is rather tight. So there is only one microphone. And for that reason, then, I would ask that only one person stand at any time to provide, oh, I'm sorry, we we actually have two microphones, I'm being told. So we'll have only two persons, because of the tight nature of the space, only two persons standing at each of those microphones at any time. The microphones will then be sanitized after use and subsequent persons can then approach those microphones. But in the order of taking the questions, we will be taking three questions first from our audience here in the auditorium. And then we will go to the questions from our online audience, which we will respond to as well. We ask that if you are seated, that you have your mask remaining on your face. If you do have to speak without the mask, you can do so when you have arrived at the microphone. But then you replace it to your face before you return to your seat. We are attempting to ensure that good social distancing practices are followed because of the nature of the space within which we're operating. Therefore, ladies and gentlemen, the question we wish to pose to you tonight, those persons here and those persons online, is what are your thoughts on getting the COVID nineteen vaccination today and the approach to testing for COVID nineteen virus? The floor is open to your comments. First, ladies and gentlemen, here within the Reginald Lewis Auditorium. I do see some movement, so I'm pausing for that person to attend to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry, sir, would you mind if, and I should have stated this before, I apologize, I would ask all persons to please state their name for the record so that if we do need to come back at any point to give you any follow-up answers, we can do that as well. I'm sorry to cross you, sir.
You preempted me because that's what I'm going to do now. My name is Mason Clark. I'm from the Barbados Concerned Citizens and the Steering Committee. I would have heard Dr. Phillips speaking about the vaccines. I would like to ask Dr. Phillips, in his opinion, what is a vaccine? From my understanding, a vaccine is a biological preparation which immunizes a person against an infectious disease. From what we are seeing, this serum does not do that. Could you please extrapolate on this for me, please?
Okay, thanks, thanks for your for your comments and and for your question. I am I'm assuming that you are positioning the the question around around the speed with which the vaccine has come to market. So if if that is the case, I think I would have made the point in relation to the the fact that we have more safety information about more safety and efficacy information in relation to these COVID nineteen vaccines that we've had on any vaccines in 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 our history. But if if you want to rephrase the question, I I understand you to be saying it's not a vaccine.
Allow me to be candid. It does not fit its job description. I've had vaccines, I'm not anti-vaccine. I've had vaccines coming up as a child, and all of them have have immunized me, whether there were periods within history, human history, as you so said, whereby some vaccines would not have fit their efficacy rate. This one, this serum that you call a vaccine, has failed miserably. I want to compare to Gibraltar, which is the most vaccinated country in the world with almost a hundred percent vaccination and actually now has the highest rate of COVID in the world. Could you explain to me what we in Barbados are calling a vaccine?
Thanks, thanks, and I'm glad that you brought up the the issue of of Gibraltar because I know that this this is something that that is is puzzling and worrying to some individuals. But in short, what what we're seeing, not only in Gibraltar, but in a couple other countries that have relatively high levels of vaccination but that have been having outbreaks of COVID, is is a mixture of a couple of things. One, they've prematurely relaxed their their other control measures. I would have made the point earlier that controlling COVID requires a number of layers. Vaccination is one layer. Two, they they were faced with high levels of the variant and they were using vaccines that were not the most efficacious. And those things coming together has resulted in outbreaks. But what you will see if you look closer at the situation, not just in Gibraltar but in other countries that have relatively high levels of vaccination but have been having outbreaks, is that two things. One, most of the cases are in unvaccinated persons. And two, the severe illness is mostly in unvaccinated persons.
But but I just told you that they had the highest cases of almost a hundred percent. So who would be the unvaccinated? I for a fact know that Rochelle Walensky, the head of the Center for Disease Control, has stated that vaccinated people are the ones who are right now more prevalent, so to speak, infected. I have it here, it's here, I have it here, she said it.
Sorry, Mr. Clark and Dr. Phillips, I believe that Dr. Williams may want to also engage on this on this conversation as well.
Good, good evening, Mr. Clark, and I thank you for your excellent question. In short, a vaccine is a whole or part of an infectious agent, such as a virus, that is used to stimulate the body's immune system so that it produces what we call an adaptive immune response so that when the person encounters the actual virus, that they can produce what we call antibodies that then neutralize the virus when they meet it. So your body has within it the ability to produce antibodies from certain cells, and these are neutralizing particles. So if I give you a part of the virus, it does not cause infection in you, but it produces the antibodies so that when you meet the actual virus, your body then neutralizes the effect of that virus in your body. So a vaccine is a part or a killed whole virus that then stimulates what we call an adaptive immune response. And that immune response then protects you when you actually encounter the illness. Now, there are different types of vaccines, sir. So the type of vaccine that you were referring to, such as for smallpox or for tuberculosis or for polio and those kinds of vaccines, those are called sterilizing vaccines. Those viruses are more or less what we call stable viruses. And so once I immunize you with the the either the killed whole virus or a part of that virus, once I immunize you, then when you encounter those diseases, your body produces a vigorous adaptive immune response and you do not get sick. And that's the type of vaccine you are referring to. However, there are different types of vaccines. So there are non-sterilizing vaccines as well. And an example of this, sir, would be the flu vaccine. So as you know, especially with respiratory viruses, these viruses tend to change and they vary from year to year. They actually go through a process of what we call mutation. Because they reproduce so quickly, scientists can even predict the pattern in which the flu virus will mutate from year to year. And based on those predictions, they make a vaccine for each year that that is in the predictive pattern. So for respiratory viruses, such as flu viruses, such as SARS viruses, those viruses tend to not be to not be as stable and their rate of reproduction and mutation is much faster than other diseases. So you have to keep adapting and adjusting the vaccine. Now, the vaccine in these non-sterilizing vaccines does not prevent you necessarily from getting infected, but it prevents you from having the negative outcomes, the, the pneumonia and the hospitalization and even death. So the purpose of these vaccines is different from the purpose of, say, a smallpox vaccine or a measles vaccine, et cetera. But both are vaccines, they just have a different purpose. One presents you from ever, from getting infected and becoming overwhelmed by the disease, and the other one prevents you from getting the infection and passing it on. So there are two different types of vaccine, and you can't necessarily say because it is not like that type of vaccine, that it is not a vaccine. So the SARS-CoV-2 vaccines are respiratory vaccines. The, the rate of change of the virus is so quick that you have to, to, to develop a vaccine that then you can, you can modify and give booster doses for as time changes. So that's, that's the answer, sir, that I think you're looking for, what a vaccine is.
I, I thank you very kindly for your definition, even though it opposes what the Webster's and the Collins and the other dictionaries have said, but I thank you for your narrative.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Is there another question from the floor?
Yeah, everybody, and good evening to the panel. Uh, my name is Peter Giddens, and I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask.
Sorry, sir, can you raise the microphone slightly? We're not hearing you very well here, my apologies.
Okay, can you hear me?
And if we can get one of the technical team to assist you?
Yes, are you taking me somewhere? Can I hold the mic? Just hold it, you can sign the place of the number.
Thank you.
Yes, this is much better. Well, given from what I just heard, it sounds like not only will people have to get two vaccines, but also boosters as time goes on on a yearly basis, just as, just as a flu vaccine goes. This is what I'm gathering from this. But I don't even want to touch on that right now. What I want to touch on is freedom of choice and autonomy, that's what we want to touch on. Right now, we're faced with a situation where people are being asked by their employers, and they use the term "ask" very loosely, being asked by their employers to be vaccinated. And failing that, be PCR tested every two weeks, 72 hours before the next shift. Now, there are a lot of situations in life where I notice that people are excluded by the pricing of things. We see it in real estate, we see it with automobiles, we see it in a wide ranges in life. Now, when you ask the common everyday person in the working class, that probably works for $350, $400 a week, to produce a PCR test every two weeks in an inflated economy that, that depressed, knowing that people are educated and learned individuals, you must know what you are asking that individual. But I want to touch on the legal aspect of it, that's what we really want to touch on. Because we know that legally, the employer cannot take that position, because the employer cannot coerce or suggest that a person take any medical procedure or any test. This is something that we know unequivocally in, in law, that this is not so. But I keep on hearing, no, but, and we are encouraging. This is something that needs to be addressed, number one. Number two, the inventor of the PCR test stated that it is not for any medical diagnostic purposes, its main goal and purpose is to magnify samples. That is number two. That is the second thing that we would like this panel to address.
Sir, I just want to say that we can only limit you to those two questions, because we do have a large number of persons who want to participate, so I would ask you to, in the interest of time, if we could limit you to just those two for now, please.
But we was having a lot of trouble having people come up to the mic, so I, I thought I would just, because no one is really, anyway. I'll, I'll take a response to those two statements and questions, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Let me deal with the, the first one that you were speaking about that addresses the law. The reality is that we are trying to apply existing legislation, pre-COVID legislation to a COVID or post-COVID situation. Many of the laws now did not contemplate a situation such as this. This is an evolving, dynamic situation, that, you know what, coming out of this, there may be new laws coming out of this, there may be legal perspectives, and somebody once said, or somebody said recently, that the fastest way to determine this is to put it in a court and let the judges decide. But what we are doing here is, we are taking all of the concerns that are voiced here today, we are taking all of the questions, we're taking all of the interventions, and we are looking at all of them, then trying to balance the interests of the ordinary person with the interests of business, with the interests of health, with the interests of the rest of Barbados. So what we end up with might not be a strict legal position. Let's say the law says this is actually a position, it does not mean that we have to take that, you know? If we come up or we discuss and arrive at a solution that is acceptable to most, then we can, by agreement, proceed down that route. Because, quite frankly, your lawyer may look at a law and say, this is what applies. My lawyer may look at the exact same law and say something else. That's why people get opinions. Opinions help to inform a discussion. Right now, we are trying to accommodate and hear all the views, so that we can come up, if possible, with an agreed position or position agreed by the majority of Barbados, as to how we proceed in what is a dynamic and evolving situation. Right now, there are no right answers to this, we are trying to find a way forward. And there are some comments that you made in there that have been noted, and I think that will help us significantly in framing what it is that we do, um, especially with respect to your concern about the cost of the vaccines and whether or not it is really an acceptable option if the person can't afford it. These are things that we want to hear, these are things that we are noting, and these are things that will help us to inform the policy that comes out of this. So thank you for that part of it. For the medical part, I'm going to turn it over to the medical experts.
Good afternoon and thanks, everyone, for allowing me to make a comment. The PCR test, we have, all have what we describe as DNA. DNA is extremely unique to each of us. It's unique to every species on earth, including viruses. So the PCR test is a test that looks at the DNA of the, of the virus. And it does so by magnifying that response. DNA is very specific for that virus, so you can't mix the DNA for coronavirus with, let's say, the flu virus, because they are two different genetic type organisms, microorganisms. And therefore, we, what we do is, in the lab, it's like a magnification process. And I will tell you that once that, um, genetic material is determined, it is very specific for that virus.
Um, I would just, um, please ask you to speak on the comments that I made in relation to the inventor of the PCR test stating that it was not for medical purposes, a manual diagnosis or diagnostics, and that he would, it was ill-advised to take, to treat it as such. Could you please touch on that, please? Because I'm talking about the person that invented the test, you're talking about what you're doing and the specific, the specificities of the test, I'm dealing with the foundational groundwork. The intention, it was not intended for medical use or diagnostics. Could you please address that? Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks, thanks so much for, um, for, for asking for, for that focus. What, what I think is, is significant here is that, that there are a couple of things. One is, it would appear that some of the comments that have been attributed to the inventor of the test, one may not be accurate or taken out of context, um, according to fact checkers, that's one. But two, I think it's also important that, as, as the CMO has said, it's like seeing a magnifying glass does not identify something, but a magnifying glass allows you to see better what is there, so it can be identified. And, and, and in essence, that's what the PCR test does.
Sir, I have a bit of difficulty.
It takes the genetic material that is there and, and multiplies it into adequate amounts, so that you can detect the particular genetic material that you're looking for that is specific to the particular organism that you're seeking to identify. And that is why PCR testing is the gold standard testing for these types of viruses.
Okay, sir, I assume that the purpose of this town hall meeting was to have truth and facts, and you just shot something down by saying that it was fact-checked, but we are coming, it's coming very clear and apparent that a lot of fact-checking is really just censorship, and it has been proven that the guy did make the statement about the test. So let me just forego that and please address the issue. Thank you.
Hi, 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 good afternoon, everyone. Um, I just wanted to state for, to the record, I'm not here to, to force anyone or, or to, to get into that sort of discussion at all. I think my discussion is always going to stay in the line of science, but I just wanted to, to answer, um, the Omas question and be really specific, I think it's an excellent question. Um, and he started by prefacing, um, something that, that, that's quite interesting, and he's done his research. Um, and I think initially, um, when most of these tests, there's not only PCR, there's many other tests I can call Nats, et cetera, which were laboratory-based tests, which were used in universities for, um, for other purposes, um, and often for, for studies. But when you think about the specific tests for which you speak, this specific test is not only used, interestingly enough, for COVID. This is used for identification of microbacteria, um, it's used for the identification of, for the yearly field, for example, this is how, um, globally for many, many years, um, people who have influenza, for example, um, and the different virions or different respiratory viruses, whether it be adenovirus, um, human metanymo, metanymovirus, um, whether it be any of the other viruses that one could think about, including the coronavirus in itself and not this particular type, um, to which you speak, um, is being used for many, many years, this particular technique, to identify in a diagnostic capacity in patients. So around the flu season, when patients come to hospitals all over the globe, um, and they're trying to figure out why have they had an infection, they will have nasopharyngeal swabs. This is something that's not uncommon, um, before even the advent of Corona, coronavirus. We send those off to the lab to try to identify, you know, what is really going on. And, and another great example, which you probably wouldn't even think about too much, uh, but it's not only used in terms of nasopharyngeal swabs, but swabs in itself are used by using PCR to identify other organisms. Another classical example, uh, might even be, uh, um, chlamydia and gonorrhea, which is totally a separate part from what we're discussing right now. So I do understand your question, I do understand what you're saying in terms of, often when, and there's so many tests I can call right now that people have used in laboratories, that later on, as we learn more how, you know, the, the function of those tests, those particular tests have been used to identify diseases in individuals and now are commonly used. So PCR tests are commonly used, um, throughout the system to identify, like I said before, um, the different forms of viruses which may cause respiratory illness, um, especially in November, December, around those areas when obviously, um, um, the flu in quotations, um, is circulating. And in this particular case, it was being used, um, to identify, uh, uh, coronavirus. And I think the important point that was made before, because I, I just following on from that particular, particular statement, is that all of these viruses have a unique pattern, and we call them a footprint or fingerprint, just like you have a fingerprint that's unique to you, and they have a fingerprint, so you're able to use that machine to make that fingerprint. But to say a little bit more, I think the public really needs to understand this particular aspect. So when you do a, 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 a PCR test, um, and it's nasals, you can do a nasal or nasopharyngeal, which goes a bit deeper, and it's uncomfortable, I'm not going to stay here, like to use it as an uncomfortable test. However, when you do that test, you collect a piece of, of material, and I see, who's following the online comments, I just want to clarify that. So you, you get a piece of that, and then it's amplified, so that it can go, you can go positive quickly, or you can go positive, um, um, much later. And to make it really, really simple, because I think it ties into what you were asking just now. So when you do that test, and your test goes positive extremely quickly, what that means for us, from a medical perspective, is I've just found a whole virus. If, to all who are listening to this particular conversation, as we go PCR testing, I want you to remember, if you remember quite, quite clearly, we look back very early in the start of this disease, when we were trying to figure out how long we kept people in isolation. One of the big things we recognized, even in Barbados, and I think there were some people who actually went up and spoke about it, and they went out and they basically said this, "Look, I've been in isolation for 70 days, for 72 days, for 80 days, it's ridiculous." And we learned out of great studies coming out of Asia, what that meant. We then found out that although your PCR test, which is a test I mentioned, because it just finds a piece of it and it amplifies, that's the name, that's, that's how the test works. So although you were positive in PCR, we recognize that you were not able to spread the disease, and that came out of some particular parts of studies in Asia, to, that we realized after about day 10, which is now why we say people who are asymptomatic at day 10, they practically can go home, because although I repeat your PCR, you might be positive, you can't spread the disease. Similarly, um, for those who are symptomatic, it's quite different. So if you're symptomatic, by common sense, all of us listening to the call, you, you're able to have, get the infection, it will stay in, you're a bit longer than people who are asymptomatic, and so your length of stay in isolation might be different. So I said all of this to culminate in saying this, the, you're absolutely, I, I love, I love how you started, which is to say, you know, the inventors of things, because people invent things for a purpose, but then it kind of shifts. I mean, it's not the only test I can call, a, a nice few tests that people started or invented for a purpose in the laboratory, um, where they're doing, um, scientific evaluation, and then they've gone back to do other ways. So I, I think it's a great question, um, and, and these are the sort of questions that are welcome, but I think, um, I think one has to understand, you may start off with an idea of tests for X purposes, but then as time goes on, one learns, and, and the PCR test is not something that's unique, I mean, I really want to get this across, it's not unique to COVID-19. This is a test that's being used, um, I men, I mentioned before, microbacteria, human metanymovirus, looking for influenza A and B, for example, looking for rhinovirus, they're all coming back to my head now, looking for the adenovirus, right? A whole long list of viruses, but also bacteria, microbacterium tuberculosis, microbacterium avium intracellular, microbacterium, um, um, cancersis, all of these other things as well. And it can also be used as another test, a different variation of the test, mind you, um, to look for other, other bacterias while I've done that shit before. So great question, thanks.
Dr. Ford, I believe we also had a follow-up response as well, behind the gentleman in the mauve shirt. Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, sure, I'll state my name. My name is Natalie Grace. I had no intention of speaking today, but I feel very passionate. I don't often feel as passionate as I do now. And my heart is racing, because I see here a wonderful example of our educational system working, but there is a gap in what we would call understanding evidence, and what constitutes evidence. And I don't mean by any stretch of the imagination to sound any way condescending or anything like that. But one of the things that is coming out in this conversation is how do we interpret evidence? So we have studies that have been done, using large numbers of persons across multiple geographic areas, with many genetic pools, coming up with sound unbiased conclusions that there is safety with the use of the vaccine. Now, we have individual rights to whether to believe that or not, but we have to make sure that when we are saying things, that we are saying things based on fact. but we have to make sure that when we are saying things, that we are saying things based on fact. So I challenge anybody listening to me right now to go to Google, put in these words, COVID, vaccine, transmission, reduction. And then look for something called a systematic review, which is the highest quality of scientific evidence. Even what we are doing here, as much, as passionate as we may sound or how we may hold ourselves phones in our hands and say things that you could go to snopes.com and find out that they're a myth, you cannot take what a panel says. You cannot take what one single case study says. You have to go to the highest level of academic science, which speaks to systematic reviews, which is pooling of all of the available evidence on a particular topic. And then you take that systematic review, and if there are many similarities between them, you come up with something called a meta-analysis. And I'm saying this because primary school was free, secondary school was free, tertiary education was free, PhD was free because of this government and this in terms of our system of government. And we can look this stuff up and not have to think about somebody says X or Y or Z. So to the persons who are listening, look it up. Now, the Ministry of Health funded mid their presentation just now. You would have seen lots of small numbers at the tops of some statements. Those mean that those are references. And I want to challenge the Ministry of Health to share those references with the Barbadian public.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, I see you in the white. We just want to sanitize the microphone first before you use it. And in the meantime, I'm going to repeat the statement made just now. COVID vaccine transmission reduction is systematic review. I think PAHO has quite a lot of information as well, as well as the WHO. And like the speaker just now, I want to challenge Barbados to review that information at the PAHO website, paho.org, I believe it is. If I, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but paho.org and the WHO website. Ma'am?
Hello there, good evening. Good evening, my name is Valerie Suzette Shomary. Um, I'm Bayesian by descent, so I speak for those who are outside of Barbados who are Basians. I'm also the co-founder of the staring committee and the founder of the Barbados Independent Complaints Register. Um, there's a few things that have been said before that I'm not going to discuss now that concern me. One of them was with regards to legislation and how we change legislation. I think you're, as a paralegal, that concerned me, what you, how you were saying that we could just change legislation, but that's another discussion. Um, but what my question-
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me. Can you just try to speak a little bit more clearly? We're having a real trouble hearing you up here.
Apologies. Thank you. Okay, my, my essential question is this. I was listening to what you were saying, sir, with regards to how many people have actually died from this terrible COVID, the coronavirus, um, may they rest in peace? Um, but I also heard what you said about how many people have had adverse reactions from the, um, from the vaccination. And to me, 48 against 1,000, was it that you said? How many? Five thousand, four thousand, six hundred? What was the figure, sir?
There were, there were three, there were three adverse reactions that were moderate, that could potentially have been connected to the vaccination out of an administered 182,000 doses.
Okay, as I said prior, maybe you didn't hear me, but I am the founder of the Barbados Independent Complaints Register. So maybe you and I will have a discussion as to the true and the figure as to people who have actually had adverse reactions, because I, I, they come to my, on my desk. Okay, many people are actually afraid to speak out. Okay, so if you say it's three, I would accept three, but my, my, my figures show slightly different. Um, 1,000, the 1,000 people had some kind of reaction to the, help me with the figures that you're giving, please.
There were 442 submissions, which were reviewed by the committee, and three of them were identified as, as being moderately severe and being potentially connected to the vaccination.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that for me. I would like to ask you another question pertaining to that. Where would the public find those figures? I mean, you were, you, you, you were quite, you know, on your presentation, you made the figures, 48 people have died from the COVID-19 coronavirus. Where would we find the figures of how many people have had adverse, whether it's mild or whether it's serious? Where would we find that information? And when, when, when would it be published in a newspaper or in a journal or a gazette? Or when would the public get to know? Or do we have to ask? How, how does it work?
We would have shared the information because we believe it's appropriate to share in the context of what we're discussing. And the, the work of the committee is continuous. So as they receive submissions, they review them, they collect information and they, they, they make assessments.
So we have shared this information before with the public.
Where, please, sir?
In press briefings, we have shared information. It's called the Adverse Events Following Immunization Committee. I'm a member of that committee. Dr. Um, Linda Williams is a member of the committee. We have pharmacologists on that committee. We have public health specialists on that committee. And we have persons who specialize in a discipline called pharmacovigilance. That committee meets weekly and what we do is we analyze and document all the cases. The cases come from multiple sources. It can be self-reporting, it can be through the private sector, which have also added, um, that number. It can be through our public health system. But there is a site, a website that you can go to, and the public is, um, asked to do this. It has been published in the paper where persons can go to that website and document any reaction. We want the public to not only come for what they describe as major disease. If you want to report that you had swelling in your arm, we take that seriously. If you want to report that you had a fever, nausea or feeling unwell after the vaccine, what I will tell you is many of the minor symptoms that occur with respect to vaccinations are occurring because your immune system is being primed so that you, you reach a state where you feel unwell for a day or two. Because what is happening is that your immune system is spilling out what we call antibodies. And those antibodies are measurable. Those antibodies are-
Has anybody died?
Ma'am, unfortunately, unfortunately, we, we really have to get to-
Has anyone died from the coronavirus in Barbados?
Ma'am, sadly, as much as we would wish to continue to engage with you-
It's a very important question.
And, and I will allow the CMO to answer that, but then I would have to ask you to return to your seat. Thank you, though. CMO, would you wish to answer that question?
So, um, let me, um, get to that question. What I will tell you, we are investigating one or two deaths. It is a process that is going on. We have to gather the evidence, not because a person has had a bad outcome following a vaccination. There is a process that we have to follow. It is, it involves multiple steps. And only after we go through that rigorous process can we make the link. It's about adding extra, um, points as to say, towards making what is called an association. Okay?
Um, unfortunately, and I'm sorry, but we will have to go to the online audience. We have given the face-to-face audience quite an extensive period of time to engage. So if you don't mind. We have one question here coming from the online audience. When are you getting rid of the mask mandate? They are ineffective and discriminatory to those exempt.
I, I just want to talk a little bit about why we wear masks and what masks are doing. So we recognized very early on in the pandemic that being a respiratory virus, masks prevent what we call droplet infection and also aerosols from being spread from person to person. So the mask is a very important barrier from allowing the virus to spread from person to person. The reason why you can see in some other countries that they have reduced the wearing of masks is because of the level of vaccination and the decrease of the spread of the virus among vaccinated persons. Now, what we knew initially, especially with the Alpha and the other early variants, was that the vaccination was extremely effective at reducing transmission. In fact, people who got vaccinated were 80% less likely than the unvaccinated of passing the virus between them. So masks were an important part of that, hand sanitization, social distancing, et cetera. So when the countries who have high vaccination proportions reached about 60, 70% vaccination, they said, okay, we will reduce the amount of mask wearing because the amount passing between people should be reduced. However, the Delta variant has challenged that now. And what they realized very quickly is that the Delta variant was more transmissible than the previous variants of SARS-CoV-2 that existed before. And so you would have seen with example, in the USA, there was a reversal of the position by the CDC in terms of people wearing masks indoors once the Delta variant took hold. So we realized it was more transmissible, so you had to go back to having a barrier, even where people were fully vaccinated. What we don't know yet is how much reduction in transmission the vaccine gives against the Delta variant. We know it's going to be less than it gave against the Alpha variant, et cetera, but it is not that it is reduced to nothing. And so people who are fully vaccinated still have a lower risk of passing the vari, the, the virus between the, each other. But we feel that the mask is still an important barrier even at this time. Until we gain more information and we gather more evidence, masks are still a very important barrier. And so at this point in time in Barbados, where we only have roughly 30% of the population vaccinated, there is no real reason at this time for us to reduce the mask mandate in this population.
Can I chime in here? Is that okay?
Dr. Ford, you'd wish to make a contribution as well?
Oh, for sure. Uh, good evening again, guys. Uh, I think, you know, this debatable mass will go on and on. I, I quite remember at the beginning of this outbreak, um, when it was a, a, we were trying to figure out, is a mask good, which type of mask it was, et cetera? But I think evidence is really clear for this one. Um, the effectiveness of, and, and, you know, and it's simple, right? So if I cough and I sneeze, you know, it holds the particles in and stops them from going forward. Um, if I cough, if I speak, for example, it's a good example of a whole prayer group who got COVID just from being together or singing together. So we know that. But I think the point that Linda's made is strategically important. I think countries like the US and UK, and it goes back to speaking about one of the things, if I could use this word, um, on this program is Erxpe, is that I think the whole distribution or, or vaccine distribution across the globe has been problematic. But to go back to exactly what I was saying, a mask holds the particles in, so they're not able to get forward to get to you, for example. It decreases that risk. It doesn't always annihilate it, but it really decreases that risk. If I add a face shield to that now, for example, it further eliminates the risk. This is something that we, we well know. But to take you back, because I think the advent of COVID has made us often forgot about things. If you ever went to Southeast Asia, you didn't even have to go Southeast Asia. Take a train in Canada, take a train in the UK, and you'll see many of the Asians, for example, often wear masks. And they had that concept of wear masks because they have often very, um, rigid and vigorous few seasons where people actually die. And that in itself, even before COVID, is a great example of the effectiveness of masks in, in, in top, stopping the spread of things which are spread by what we call aerosols, which are very small particles, but often by droplets, which are bigger particles. So I think the, the evidence for this one is clear, not only from COVID. You know, if we go back and talk about what I just said before, the evidence streams all the way back in history to influenza and all the other respiratory illnesses. And I think the point that, that really needs to be brought home here is that countries like the US, for example, CDC, I may have sat on some of these panels. And, 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 and the problem in many of these countries when they made those decisions, they made them based on the fact that they hadn't vaccinated a large percent of their population. And this is exactly the point. You vaccinate a large percent of your population and you think you're okay and you move along. But you have to consider those who are not vaccinated and the challenges that will come where that is concerned. And I heard a point that was made out here just now, which is absolutely true. And I think we don't need to hide the facts, right? I think, you know, if someone makes a brilliant point, you say they made a brilliant point. And that brilliant point is, and I saw it on the, on the, the write-up in the, in the chat group, and they're correct, right? They're correct, they're absolutely correct. People who are, we now know with the Delta variant, who get the Delta variant, can still spread the virus. This is unlike the other variants which, which, um, Dr. Williams mentioned before. So we know that it can spread. And this is exactly why the longer we spend as a globe, um, you know, not addressing the issue in terms of, of, of stopping the spread of COVID by whatever means, there, there's a large risk of us spraying out of one of these forms of the virus as a replicase that can, you know, can really hurt us. And that's really what I think that, that we really need to think about. So the evidence for mask wearing is not only, um, certainly from COVID, but for all the other respiratory diseases that one can think about.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ford. We are going to take one more question from the Government Information System Facebook before we go to the Zoom audience. And this question is from Sophie Smith. The question reads, "For me, there is just, there are just two questions that need to be asked of the medical professionals. What are the potential long-term effects on my body of taking these vaccines? What will be the potential effects of compounding it by taking booster shots regularly?"
So, um, let me attempt to answer that question. Remember that these vaccines were developed fairly in a compressed period of time, and that had some good benefits and that had some drawbacks. The drawbacks to that is that we do not know, the world does not know about the long-term effects. What is going to happen four, five years down the line, even 10 years down the line? That is still to be seen. What I can tell you is that the short-term side effects are well documented. But we come with what we term a risk-based approach. And in that risk-based approach, the evidence suggests that there are more benefits than the side effect profile of these vaccines. That's what we currently know. But the, um, the person online is right. Some of the information we don't have at this point in time because we have only been at this for about a year duration. I don't know if, um-
Yes, let me add to that. With every medication, treatment, vaccine, et cetera, we have two things to consider. You have what you expect to occur, and then you have the, what we don't expect to occur. So with a vaccine, we have what we expect to occur. These we call side effects. And these side effects are short-term. And as, as Dr. George indicated, those are the things that happen with every vaccine. You get a sore arm, you get a slight fever, um, you may get some stomach upset, et cetera. And those last for a short time. What we don't expect to occur are the things we call adverse effects. Now, all vaccines go through phase one, two and three trials. And those are human- one, two, and three trials. And those are human trials involving greater and greater numbers of people. All of these vaccines that we are using now have gone through all three sets of those trials involving in phase three thousands of people of different races and makeups in different parts of the world, so that they can see how effective is the vaccine, and so that they can see if there are any adverse events that they don't expect. Now, with any drug, even if it's for hypertension, diabetes, et cetera, et cetera, we have what we then call post-marketing surveillance. So because each person is unique and individual, there may be things that we don't expect with any medication that will then be reported back to the company. This is not experimentation. It's just that you are unique, and we do not know every single thing that can happen. But then we look at, what is the risk of it happening? Does it happen in one in a thousand people? Does it happen in one in ten thousand people? And is that risk greater with the vaccine than in the background population? If the risk is greater than in the background population, then we can say it may be attributable to the vaccine. Whether or not we can capture all of these things that we did not know would occur, it is going to take time, and that's what's happening now. So when people report, even what we report in Barbados, we then feed that into a global system which is run by the WHO. And they look at what are these adverse events all over the world, and whether or not there are more than we expected in the general population. That's how we evaluate all drugs, and that's what pharmacovigilance is about. And that's how we also evaluate vaccines. So whether or not there will be long-term effects that we didn't expect, that's what happens when we market any drug, any, any chemical, anything that we put in our bodies. We look to see what will happen in the long, long term. And that's what we're doing now. It's all part of the safety process that's built in to giving medications to people. And we, as doctors, feed into that by reporting it to the relevant bodies. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I'm going to take one further call from the Zoom audience, and we will be right back to you, ma'am, in the hall. I apologize, but we want to try to share the space as much as possible. And I'm going to call on Mr. Curtis Long. Curtis Long in the Zoom.
Good night. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very clearly. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a question and an observation. So my question is, I'm wondering if anybody from the panel or whatever could tell me what is the case definition of a COVID death? So in other words, if a person, if a person, if the clear cause of death was a heart attack, but the person had COVID at the time, is it true that that will be regarded as a COVID death as well as anything else? The observation that, the observation is this. What I've realized is on the COVID notice board, for some reason, and I do not know, I would like to know rather, what is the reasoning or what is the rationale behind moving, behind removing the recovery staff? One minute the recovery staff was there so that people could see the recoveries, but now it's no longer there. And you have to do some amount of mental arithmetic to find out what the recoveries are. I think when you don't show the recoveries, it kind of adds to the fear mongering. And also when you, even when you listen to the update on the news, two things that are predominantly mentioned, it is the cases and the deaths. Those two things are predominantly mentioned. Hardly anybody speaks about the recoveries. The second thing is, everybody is saying that the only way out of this crisis is vaccine, vaccine, vaccine. But there's absolutely no discussion regarding natural immunity or people who have recovered from COVID and have antibodies. Is Barbados doing its own studies regarding natural immunity towards COVID? Thank you.
So I would like Corey to answer. I don't know if Corey's on the call to answer the first question.
I'm trying to recall that there are many questions. There are some, trying to recall what was asked to the first question. I think, I think this is about COVID deaths. Right? So it's very important. And I think, as you almost said before, it's a process for which we make. So someone can have COVID and, for example, die of something totally different, and they will not be counted as a COVID death. They will be counted as a person who dies of X but had COVID on board. And that's particularly important. You gave a specific example of myocardial infarction, for example, a heart attack, for example. People can have strokes with COVID, for example. COVID, as we know, for most of you who don't know, maybe COVID can cause what we call in the body, your body to become hypercollagable. So your blood becoming thicker, and it can form clots, and you all know that. And that can result even in a heart attack. It may even result in a stroke. It can result in a clot in any vessel as well. So that is something that we would, we will call that then a COVID-related death because of the association with clots and COVID. More commonly, you'll get clots in the lung, for example. Let's call it pulmonary embolization, when the person's obviously not able to breathe. So that's really how we really assign those particular aspects. I don't think there is another part of the question for me to answer at this particular point, I believe. If there is, I will chime in.
So Corey, the other question was with natural immunity?
Right, so that's, I mean, I think the guys there are giving us a really good question. So natural immunity, this is an ongoing, this is an ongoing discussion globally. So do people who have natural immunity require another vaccine? For example, if you got COVID before, do you need to require a vaccine? Some areas of the world have already made that decision to say yes, they're going to give you one shot only. Some areas have said two, because it's ongoing. You know, we are still yet a year and a half into this. So we're learning a lot. What it would say is, what we know now is that, and this is very important, and I heard it being thrown around a lot, having antibodies does not equate to productivity. And this is very important. I think it's often a misinterpretation. So because you have antibodies, does not necessarily mean that you are perfectly protected. In fact, it's the amount or level of the antibodies that will help incur that protection. So I think so many of the studies which have come out more recently have chimed into this. And they've basically said, look, and they give the good example, I hate to say the word vaccine, everybody hates that word, but it gives a good example of if you have the first vaccine, on a brilliant study that just came out of Israel, if you have the first vaccine, you're only about thirty-three percent protected, even against the Delta variant which was circulated there. Now, if you have the second vaccine, it's about sixty-six percent protective, but that's the lower range in terms of studies we have right now. So it's a protective, but you're about ninety-three percent protected from ending up in hospital in ICU. So that's a very important point. And to go back exactly to what the question was, most countries have decided, based on a response to the initial antibodies, sorry, the whole vaccine and their antibody production, that yes, because what you do is further boost your immune response. So we believe that those individuals are actually probably even going to be, it's a good question by the alma, right? They're even probably going to be better in terms of responding to any of these variants you see thrown around right now. I think there is a belief that that could be so at this particular point. And that's as much as I can say. I always say I'm a very honest fellow. That's as much as we know at this point. I can't really say much more than that at this point, but great question. Thanks.
So the, while natural immunity is certainly established, there is a drawback because unfortunately, if you're going to go that route, persons will die. That is the issue, that persons will die. If you, if you wait on populations to develop natural immunity, your death rate will soar. And if vaccines were a matter to stop persons from dying, that's what we're trying to get through to the public.
Dr. George, can I please, please give me an opportunity to chime in here? I really have to say this. Sorry, I missed that point. That's probably the most important point of the whole, the whole, the whole program, which is simply this. Look, countries have tried it, right? It's been tried and tested. The UK, there was almost an attempt, just let things go and see what happens. And the problem, I think people often miss, and again, this has nothing to do with vaccine. I'm not telling you, you know, humanitarian vaccines. I'm not telling you, I'm following the science, right? And countries have recognized very simply this one fact, right? We can, if you try that, you will overwhelm Barbados. You will overwhelm your healthcare system. The UK overwhelmed their healthcare system. The US overwhelmed their healthcare system. If you remember the very early part of the outbreak in Italy, it was devastating for their healthcare system. They have like millions of, thousands of doctors more than us, thousands of ventilators more than us, and they, they really, and that's the crux of the matter. If you go for natural immunity, it means you're basically sacrificing people to death. And I think there's no one who's listening today that would like to end that or even have that discussion. And that's the key. If you say, okay, let it run rampant, you're basically saying, look, an unvaccinated population, for example, because you know, the vaccine decreases your risk of utilization, based on the study I just told you, you're basically opening up your country for disaster. And I keep saying, you have to look and see what's going on globally and don't make the same mistakes that they have made.
Okay, Dr. Ford, I think that we have Mr. Hart here who wants to join, who wants to engage on this topic as well. I'll remind the audience that Mr. Hart is the manager of the Quarantine Facility for the Ministry of Health.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to weigh in on the last part of the question.
Sorry, Mr. Hart, could you go a little closer to the microphone, please? We're not hearing you very clearly.
Right, so I just want to weigh in on the last part of the question that was asked by the caller, when he stated, is it all about vaccines, vaccines, vaccines? But we have been pretty successful in Barbados by looking at all the components and all the measures to reduce and control the spread of COVID-19. Our focus for the first year could not have been on vaccines because we had no vaccines. But our focus was on all the things such as all the infection control measures that Dr. Williams spoke about earlier, mask wearing, good hygiene practices. And then we did a lot of quarantining, isolation, early detection, testing. And those measures have brought us to the point where we are. Vaccines is another component, is another weapon to this arsenal. Because, and someone asked earlier, are we going to stop mask wearing? No. It has worked for us. What we're doing is keep adding weapons to the arsenal to reduce and control the spread of COVID-19 in Barbados. Dr. Ford said, if we depend on persons just getting immunity after having COVID, we might not have a Barbados. So I think if we continue what we are doing, and we made it absolutely clear, the ministry is not saying you have to take a vaccine, but we want you to work with us in keeping all the measures in place. And we encourage as much persons as possible to take the vaccine. So vaccines is not the end-all, end-all of it when it comes to controlling the spread of COVID-19.
Thanks, Lawrence, Mr. Hart. The young lady who had previously stood?
No, we're not.
Good evening, all. Good. I'm going to do my questions, so you guys can answer them. They're really short and to the point. First, though, let me say
Ma'am, I must remind you, only one question at this point in time because we really are very short on time.
I know, but
One question only. I'm very sorry this evening.
Wow. Now I'm going to have to pick between three. Let me first say, you guys are doing an amazing job, the Barbados Labour Party. And this is one of the reasons that I went to each and every one of the BLP meetings because I, oh, I like the fact that always kept very, kept it interactive. So amazing job. Being someone that is under forty, and within the last six weeks or so, and I'm not even going to talk from the last year and a half, I've done well over two hundred PCR tests, and I'm also following the science. So my question is, obviously, it is pretty straightforward that we can't have mandatory vaccine for various reasons, medical reasons, religious reasons, all the various reasons. So there's going to have to be, people can take it, people can't take it, it's optional. That's how I see it. My question is, though, because I'm not originally from here, and I'm from a Caribbean island where they're saying to people, oh, you have to take it, or you're going to lose your job, or you will have to take it, or you can't buy gas. I want to be sure that when Barbados roll out something like, oh, we want you to take the vaccine, it doesn't impact especially the younger population. So my question is, based on the science and taking myself as an example, within the last eight weeks, I've been to ports. And before I traveled to those ports, I ran some tests, sorry, I ran a survey on the CDC, and I entered my height, my age, my weight, and the percentage came up that my possibility of getting COVID was zero point zero zero eight. What are we going to do to convince the younger populations in Barbados that we have to take the vaccine when a lot of what we are seeing are older people dying from the virus, and once we wear our masks and we social distance, we're pretty safe as young people?
Thank you. Thank you for your question. And I think, I think it is very useful for you to have directed our attention in this, in this direction. Because the reality is that, that many individuals may consider themselves to be low-risk. So we spoke about a couple of things. We spoke about the fact that any of us can become infected. We spoke about the fact that any of us can have negative outcomes, even though the risk of having negative outcomes may be increased for particular groups. And we spoke about who's in those groups. But yes, I can understand why somebody who perceives themselves as being in a, in a low-risk group may feel that they don't have to take as many measures. The other thing, though, that we did speak about was the community benefit of us being involved in as many layers as possible. Because my protecting myself is not just for me, it is also for those who may come in contact with me, my elderly grandmother, my sick cousin, my workmate who, who, who is at increased risk because they have a very high BMI, et cetera. So I would hope that every person would see that there are a range of measures, and the more measures that they avail themselves of, the benefit is not only to them, but to the wider community as well. But, but thank you very much for that question because that is a very, very important point, that some individuals may see themselves as being at decreased risk and therefore feel that, that they can neglect some of the measures to the detriment, one, potentially of themselves, and two, to the wider community.
One moment, ma'am. I believe Dr. Williams or is
So Dr. Berman Jones or Barry Ward?
Or Dr. Berman Jones?
Good afternoon or good evening to those in the audience and online and right here. Again, I do want to thank you for the question. You asked, what can we do to convince the younger persons who may have stronger immune systems and may be able to social distance and mask wear and all of that? What can we do to convince those persons? Once, once a person's mind is made up, it's kind of hard to change it. But what I do wish, persons will be able to see and experience, and it's not widely available because we do very much try to protect persons who have been diagnosed positive. As someone who traces positive COVID persons within the Ministry of Health and Wellness, I've had too many unfortunate experiences of having to deal with families who have lost loved ones. All of them are not old, all of them were not infirm, and they would have lost persons. That is never a comfortable conversation. I myself would have lost friends. I've lost colleagues. I myself would have lost friends, I've lost colleagues to COVID that I didn't expect, that I thought were healthy. Some persons would have recovered, but as a young person, I am not in this position here today because a while back, I would have decided to become vaccinated. I would have had fears too. It's a new person, it's a new thing, it's a new thing, and and we have to respect each other. But why I did it when I got the opportunity was because I wanted to do as much as possible to protect those around me. And in public health, it's always like that. It's about reducing risk. And often, it's it's hard for us to to appreciate and understand risk until something bad happens to you. So um, I really wish there was a forum where persons who were really affected by COVID could come and have a discourse with the public so that persons can understand the impact of what happens when you lose someone from COVID. I really wish there was that sort of forum, but I can tell you, even as a doctor, I've seen many persons die over my twenty-plus years of experience. It's never comfortable. And as a doctor, if I have a patient in front of me, if they have diabetes, I do all that I could to protect them from those complications. Anybody that knows me knows that I do that. I do it for my children. I do it for 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 my husband. I do it for my parents. I encourage my friends. So yes, one person may be able to protect themselves, but it's to protect others. It's about community.
Good evening. My name is Carol Haines. I'm visiting really from the UK. And I've just gone through the pandemic, okay? What we what we just said about Dr. Ford saying that, please, don't do what we wanted to do, which was a similar thing to her immunities, to the point that even our Prime Minister didn't believe how terrible this virus is and how it wasn't really until people had loved ones, friends, families died that it hit home. It wasn't until you're supporting nurses to go into the ward and go into the room and nurse that COVID patient. When that started to happen, people started to come on board with the virus, with the vaccine. They said, look, I need hope. We need hope. We need some form of hope. Myself, I put myself forward to have my vaccine in January. I probably did it selfishly in that I filmed myself and then I shared it with my family in England and friends and then in Barbados before you actually had the vaccines here, and they went forward and they had their vaccines. I'd like to put myself forward. In London, I became a health ambassador, which I'm still am. I still do my training. And it's through my lived experience I would like to offer my services to help promote health. It is about preservation of life. I really wouldn't like to see that we wait until people feel that they're going to have immunity or to do a lot of research. We've all done those things. I'd like to see that you ask the people have key players. What London did, they put key players because in the boroughs of Southwark in London, we have, we had a high prevalence of black people who were not taking the vaccine. And it became problematic because we saw the cases rising and through, they had underlying issues, diabetes, which we, some of you doctors would know, that any infection hits your body. You're already on a a losing side, really. But I would like to come on board and offer my services and my ideas, my experiences and my training that I'm still having and to help.
Just, I would just like to quickly follow up. You are spot on because in countries outside Barbados, the groups that took on the burden of illness were people like looking like me. The groups that took on the burden of illness were healthcare professionals and people who interact with people who may be sick. And that is the challenge. Barbados has a golden opportunity because we have gone great lengths to get vaccines in this country. It is not easy, and we are trying our best. We would like to reach the stage where Barbadians have a choice, a choice of vaccines. So you can say I want Sinopharm because of your research, you can say I want Pfizer, et cetera. But I think that Barbados is in an excellent place, but I am asking the population to come with us. Thank you.
I really want to thank you, ma'am, and I hope that we can continue in this vein of suggestions and ideas as we continue. We will be continuing. It is now seven o'clock, but we will be continuing until seven thirty. I'm gonna take one more response from the audience here in the hall, but we must get to some of our public in the online forum as well, as you can appreciate. I'm sorry, we're not hearing you very well.
Thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you very much.
I just want to set my question within a context. Um, I've been hearing.
Sorry, could we have your name first? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Lisa Niles. Lisa Niles. I've been hearing several words said tonight, dynamic, things are changing, evidence is being accumulated, we're looking at data. And the two reasons, major reasons, some have cited for the vaccine reluctance or reluctance to take the vaccine is the lack of data or incomplete data, data gaps, and the lack of long-term data. And I know we've addressed that already, but I want to address it now within the context. I know that the doctor has said that the Ministry of Health has no plans to mandate vaccines. We've heard that from other Caribbean governments. And yet, we have heard, as was said earlier, that workers are effectively, effectively being coerced to take the vaccine. So I just want to cite the, there are vaccines that have been recalled from the market. There's a Rota Shield vaccine that was approved in nineteen ninety-eight and it was recalled a year later. There's a nineteen seventy-six swine flu vaccine that was ceased sometime after it was introduced to the market. There's a Pandemrix two thousand and nine H one N one influenza vaccine that was also taken off the market. The data is developing. And I know that in May, we have, we talked about the blood clots from the AstraZeneca vaccine. In July, there was a link found between heart inflammation and the mRNA vaccine, which is soon to come to Barbados. In July as well, there's a, the European, the EMA in Europe, found a link between Giombarre syndrome as a, it said rare side effect of the Johnson and Johnson shot.
Ma'am, in the interest of time, I must ask you to to come to your point as urgently as you can.
Yes. So far for August, there are three possible adverse side effects that the EMA is also looking at. These are severe allergic skin reactions and then kidney disease. And I I cite this to to ask my question.
Sure.
And and we've also said that mask wearing and social distancing are effective. We've heard that. Dr. Ford said it. The CMO said it as well. Within the context of some employers mandating the vaccine, even here in Barbados, within the context that the data is being developed, within the context that several persons who are normally pro-vaccine, including myself, are very concerned about the long-term impact of these vaccines, about which we are, as I said, still getting to know about it. Would you consider not supporting mandating vaccines, giving workers choices, not even forcing them to take a test, but giving them the choice of masking up social distancing, which has been proven here in Barbados last year with no vaccines, to be very effective?
Ma'am, I think the Attorney General this after this evening, as well as the Prime Minister previously, have all said that there is no intention specifically by this government at this point in time to mandate vaccines. It is not the intention of the government to mandate vaccines.
I really have to say something at this point.
Sir, I'm sorry, but we have to go.
Is the government.
Sir, I'm really very sorry, but we really have to go to the online audience and give them an opportunity also. I'd like to call on Kylo Bridgman.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Bridgman?
Hey, so I have basically two questions, quickly because I know there's a lack of time. Um, the first one is, what liability does the government and companies have for the citizens and employers if they are, if they have adverse reactions when they say, you know, do the vaccine? Because the first one, the second one is, so the people in America, following America to the entire world, when they get the vaccine, they're presented with fat sheets. One is to say that they have read it, that they have read and they can play with it. And the second one says that it's not approved, it's only approved under the EUA, the Emergency Use Authorization. Every vaccine is saying that that's the only thing that they're approved by. When I ask around, I'm hearing everybody saying that they just got a vaccine and they got a card. They don't seem to be very informed, and what I'm hearing is that the government and everybody else, all the doctors are saying they're informed, they're informed, but they're not getting these fat sheets. So I want to know why, why they're not and if that process will be changed. So the liability, does the government have and companies have liabilities if the people getting the vaccine do get sick? And about the fat sheets for the vaccines?
So you go ahead.
Just to answer the the liability aspect of it, all of the manufacturers of the vaccines would be liable for any effects from their vaccine that they should have foreseen and can be attributed to them in negligence. This does not come to the government of Barbados. It does not come to the doctor who administered it to you unless you can show that he was at fault in administering it. It doesn't come to the Ministry of Health unless it can be shown that the Ministry of Health was delinquent in their storage and their handling the vaccine actually caused you an issue. But the liability for the vaccines ultimately lies with the manufacturer of the vaccines.
Dr. Williams?
Um, I'm just going to kind of kill two birds with one stone, addressing Ms. Niles and the other question sort of together. Um, so variants have changed the picture. So what we knew at the beginning has been changing over time. What we know now is that the Delta variant is very, very transmissible, and that high transmissibility leads to greater risk of people becoming infected, becoming sick, and overwhelming of the healthcare system. If the healthcare system is overwhelmed, it means that, it means that people who have like sepsis from any reason, like infected foot or appendicitis or so on, who we would not normally expect to suffer and die from their disease, will now not have the healthcare that they expect if our if our healthcare system becomes overwhelmed. And we will not have the nurses and doctors available to treat simple things because they will be dealing with COVID-19. So that's the risk we run in the face of the variants, okay? And so therefore, herd immunity becomes a more distant dream, especially in the context of whether we get a high amount of community transmission of these variants. Because it takes a greater proportion of the population to be fully vaccinated in order to protect those who can't get vaccinated. Now, you asked, why can't we just mask up and do the social distancing and so forth? Well, because these variants are changing, because they're more transmissible, right? The the death rate and also the sickness rate will be very high with these. And so those are not, these measures are important, but they are not sufficient. Now, I am very passionate about vaccination in general because, as the lady said, you know, what what is, what is the risk that we run of just, you know, not having these vaccines in the space? Barbados is where it is as a country because of vaccination. We were a developing country, but we behave more like a developed country. And the reason we behave like a developed country is because we do not have that double burden of disease. The double burden of disease means that we're not dealing with all the infectious diseases while we're also dealing with the non-communicable diseases like hypertension and diabetes and so forth. And the reason why we are in this position as a nation is because our country has, in a sense, mandated that all of our children get vaccinated before they attend school, before you go from primary to secondary, before you go into university, before you become a healthcare worker. All of these categories of people are required to show proof of immunization. And by having that built into our public health system, we as a nation have moved past where other developing nations are. We're not spending that portion of our money on dealing with polio, on dealing with tuberculosis, on dealing with measles and mumps and rubella. We have gotten past that as a nation. So I sound passionate because I am concerned that for this particular vaccine, we are saying that something is very different. And I understand your fears. I shared them as well. And I also had to address my concerns and my hesitancy before taking the vaccine. And that's what we are advocating that you do. Yes, we do not have all the data, but emergency use authorization does not mean that it was rushed. There are hundreds of thousands of scientists that take into account the phase one, two, and three trials. And what they come to the conclusion is that the phase four, which would be the years of post-marketing surveillance, that the risk of this disease is so great that the benefit of giving the vaccine outweighs the risk of the years of post-marketing surveillance that we would normally have. So they authorized it for use even while that post-marketing surveillance continues. And all of these vaccine companies still have to provide information to the governments and to the World Health Organization about what is being seen. That's what I talked about earlier, about all the doctors and nurses and people who give vaccines, feeding back information into a central mechanism. And the companies also have to give reporting as to these adverse effects that we don't expect. So we can't have it perfectly, but we do know that the risk of being unvaccinated is greater than the risk of anything that you would get from the vaccine itself. And that's similar to when we have certain drugs. You know, when we have certain drugs, we may not know everything about the drug before we give it, but we recognize that this is such an overwhelming situation that we have to sort of stem the tide. And I listened to Dr. Greenwich give a wonderful presentation to the Cabinet Subcommittee about what would happen to us economically if Delta variant were. were to get hold in Barbados and run rampant in Barbados, what it would cost us as a country economically. We don't want another lockdown. We can't afford it. But not only do we not want another lockdown, we would not be able to access the services to which everyone has become accustomed now. So this is why I am imploring you. I am passionate. I'm not angry. I'm passionate, okay? Because I recognize that it is important for us as a nation to understand that we are where we are as a nation because of vaccination, because of those protocols that were put into place by many people long before us that recognized the benefit was greater than the risk.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. We have one more question that we'd like to take from the Zoom audience. This question is from Vonnie Wiggins. Vonnie Wiggins? Is Vonnie Wiggins still there? If not, we also have Kerry Wilson.
Good evening all. My question is, I have seen that, I've been reading and doing some research. It says studies done in the UK and Israel have showed that 10 weeks to three months after vaccination, the antibodies from the vaccine in the body starts to weaken and a booster shot is required. Right now, both Israel and USA have started to roll out their booster shots based on what these studies have shown. The CDC is saying that the booster shot is required to help boost your immune system against the COVID-19 virus every six months. We, as a country, are having problems obtaining the vaccine itself right now compared to other countries that can afford it. My question is, how are we going to use to keep up with these booster shots every six months if this is the case? I'm not looking at short-term gain as some of us are looking at. I'm looking at the long-term gain as this virus may be around for the long haul. My suggestion is, as a country, I was in the last meeting and we had touched on doing research ourselves in-house. So, and we also touched on it today about looking at how much of the natural antibodies we need and how long it will last against this virus. My thing is, we shouldn't put, as the old saying, all our eggs in one basket. My example to use is the abuse of antibiotics. I know we have these superbugs. That's all I have to say.
All right, I just want to make a small comment to that. And it's very interesting because I keep saying to my colleagues for a while that I see COVID behaving like flu viruses, where every year, research has to be done to see what was the predominant strains and the vaccines are made based on the predominant strains. I remember a few years back, a flu vaccine was developed and CDC came back and said, it is, it's only going to be about 20% effective to the strains that are there now. And they had to go back to the table again. And I think going forward, because we are going two years into this now, that a lot of research is going to be done based on boosters for COVID-19 and, you know, looking at the predominant strains and seeing how the vaccines will be developed over time to combat this. But from my, I, I am seeing that. I also want to make a short comment on immunization. And I was privileged to work in a country for two years where persons have very little access to vaccines and the impact it had on the country during a devastating outbreak of Ebola. Persons were unable, like us, to walk to any polyclinic and get the MMR vaccines, to get your chickenpox vaccines and that. And we were so focused on Ebola, we didn't, we almost forgot that the children had to be immunized. And then we start seeing outbreaks of measles in entire villages. And we are a privileged country when it comes to vaccine. We are where we are, as Dr. Williams said, because of the uptake of vaccines we have, we have in this country over the years. We are not forcing anybody, but vaccines is a serious weapon in our arsenal, and we must find a way to embrace it. We are not forcing it, but we must find a way to embrace. I would not want to see Barbados the way I left West Africa after the Ebola outbreak. Outbreaks take a devastating effect on countries, and we as a country must begin to take this serious. I'm not a financial man. Mr. Greenwich is there, but I am sure whenever he looked at those numbers dearly, his head hurts. So it's not just affecting me and you, but it's affecting all aspects of this country. I see people every day coming into quarantine. And some, and I agree with my colleague that people need to understand what we see every day. People are afraid. People want to know where I got it from. I was only in the bar. I was only liming. I was only at the fete. But my grandmother, and you see entire families, only today I saw entire family getting back results, positive results, and, and four of them were over the age of 60 years old. They didn't go anywhere. Someone brought it to them. So we have to really think, sit down and take thought of where we are as a people, and because we cannot go anywhere unless each one of us play our part in fighting this game of COVID-19.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Hart. I have one more comment I want to share with you from our GIS Facebook page. This is from Natalie Adams. And Natalie Adams asks, with the availability of so many different vaccines, will we be able to choose from a list which vaccine we use?
So that is highly ideal. And as I have indicated, because people will want to do their individual research, that's well accepted. And once we have vaccines in country and we have good supplies, certainly Barbadians will be allowed to choose which type of vaccine they're immunized with. That is not a problem from the Ministry of Health. Barry, I don't know if you want to add any issues in terms of community?
Right. The only thing I would add to Dr. George's statement is that I think that we have also to be careful with a lucky dip kind of approach to vaccines in that, you know, persons have, you have a choice of, say, two, and someone, I want that one, I want this other one that you're very unlikely at actually getting. So I think that we have to be careful that while we do the research regarding certain vaccines, they also have to be cognizant of where we are as a country in that a lot of what we can try to obtain as a country, we might not actually be able to obtain in terms of we may ask for one vaccine and the vaccine producer says, well, we're not giving it to you or it's not available. And I think that we have to be cognizant of that as well, that certain vaccines might not be accessible to us in a short-term period. Yes, we're going to try to get them, but it might not be accessible. And therefore, we must be careful where we say, well, I want to wait for X, and there's no immediate likelihood that X is going to be available in the short term. And I'm going to follow up with what Alvin would have said in terms of that the, the importance of getting vaccination is always with the vaccine that you generally have at the moment. All of them are effective. So I think that you have to be careful with vaccine shopping in that regard.
I just wish to clarify something I had said earlier, correct something I said earlier. I'd indicated that the vaccine manufacturers will be liable for any effects from the vaccine. That is actually incorrect. That is the general and normal position in respect of manufacturer items, which include most medications. But because of the particular and peculiar nature of the COVID-19 vaccines, the cold chain process where different vaccines are required to be stored at different temperatures, I think the AstraZeneca is required to be stored at minus 70. Pfizer is minus 70 degrees centigrade. The manufacturers have no control over how the vaccine is stored or transported once it leaves them. So all countries that have signed on to the vaccine programs and are receiving vaccines had to sign an indemnity as well with the manufacturers that they would not be held liable. So the position I gave you is the normal position in relation to these things, but because of the peculiar nature of this vaccine and the storage issues and all the other things that make it peculiar, that would not have made sense. And one of the prerequisites is signing of an indemnity with respect to the manufacturers and the providers.
Attorney General?
I wanted to say something almost in summary in my mind. I think many of, many Barbadians are Christian, and you would recognize this text, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God." I sense in our country right now a growing division that I think is not necessary. And I think that it is going to be extremely important for us to preserve our level of conscience about any particular decision, but also to make that decision in the presence of facts. So I will never probably have the opportunity to talk to how many of a thousand people again. So I just want to crave your indulgence to just emphasize a couple of things that might have, you know, might not have resonated. Fundamentally, we recognize that my choice may be different from your choice, and I'm not going to force you. I think we've said right now in these conditions in Barbados, we're not going to force anybody to take a vaccine. But what we are seeing is that in the multi-pronged arsenal against COVID, the vaccine has proven to be effective. We have said here tonight that it decreases transmission. We have said that it decreases your, or rather, it reduces the chance of you becoming extremely sick or extremely ill. It decreases the, the, the chance of you dying. It decreases the possibility of you affecting another person. And what we're saying, what I would like everybody to hear, regardless of political persuasion or religion or anything, is that as Barbados, we cannot afford it. I got off the phone last week with a colleague who runs an ICU in another Caribbean country, and he said, Natalie, we waiting for people to die. I think sometimes Barbadians, we say God is a Beijing, but we take it too far. Do we remember the fatality rate in Italy? Do you remember people lining up on the outside of hospitals, could not get access? What, what is it that we are waiting for? Now, that may sound like an emotional response. It may sound like fear mongering, but unfortunately, it is not. So what I would really want to encourage persons is this is, this is not about your choice against my choice and forcing you. It's just saying, look at what we could potentially do to this little itty-bitty rock that we love. And then finally, what I want to say is, we say a vaccine, and we say like it's an evil demon, and we say drugs, and we say medicine, and we say like vaccines get recalled. This thing, there are different reasons. We just can't make those statements. So if a person gets up and makes a list and says the vaccines this and the vaccines that, you have to go and look and see why they were recalled. It doesn't mean they were necessarily detrimental in the same way. And finally, I want to say that water has its side effects. Coriander or Cersei bush has its side effects. Go in your garden and pull up periwinkle. That's the, that's the basis for most of the chemotherapeutic agents. Grind up two sauerkraut leaves and put in two sauerkraut seeds and see if you don't vomit the whole night. We have a way of classifying and demonizing things that are potentially of our benefit. And I really want us to stop listening to the person who sounds most passionate and go and read. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to have our last contribution this evening from the audience, and I believe also from Facebook, unfortunately, because we have reached the end of this evening's proceedings. So I'd like to crave your indulgence for our last presenter this evening.
Thank you, moderator. If you permit me one question, please, for Dr. Ford, and then a quick comment after. I honestly don't take many medications. I try natural remedies. And so, for example, the flu, moment I feel something happening, I run to honey, I run to garlic, I run to lemon juice or lime, and even sometimes a little bit. And even the time when I thought I was getting Zika, these work for me. So, Dr. Ford, it may seem a silly question.
Sorry, is the microphone?
Yeah. Dr. Ford, can I not believe in... Dr. Ford? Okay. Why can I not believe in this remedy and the remedies that have been given me over time and, and believe in them as it relates to COVID? My name is Errol Griffith.
Dr. Ford, are you still online with us? We're not hearing a response from Dr. Ford.
Anyone else can answer, but I have one more comment after.
Oh, we do have Dr. Ford online.
Sure, sir.
Hey, I think the question is about natural, natural remedies.
Yes.
It's not my area just to really comment on, to be frankly honest with you. But I think we have to really, I mean, it's a reasonable question. We know in medicine, for example, that there are herbal remedies for certain things. And I think as the previous speaker mentioned, there are some of these agents that you're using or that, that she was said to have used that are actually components of medication, and we know what some of those things are. So there may be some use for those purpose. What we don't know in COVID is if any of those are actually applicable for COVID-19. And it's really a fine guess. What we know for sure is that some of the agents that we use have been helpful to patients. So I often go based on scientific evidence, as I always say, in terms of how people respond. If you looked at some of the drugs that we used in Barbados, for example, dexametazone, tilasumab, and remdesivir, which we use less of now, we had some amazing responses in terms of people were sick. You remember the last thing that I was on, we had a very ill patient, and she's actually well at that point. So I think we often use what we know works. I'm not going to dispute about whether this works or that works. I'm just going to go based on the evidence that's in front of me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Now my comment. I also don't take diabetes. I don't take hypertension medication because I'm seeking to beat them with diet and exercise, okay? And I'm plus five. But, Dr. Ford, I heard you make a passionate plea. I think it was Saturday during the press conference. And you said that you wanted Barbadians to not do it for them, but do it for other people. And the Thursday before, I had been facilitating a session for about 50 people. And a lot of the time, I didn't have my mask on because it's uncomfortable to do what I do with a mask on. And because of you, Dr. Ford, I then considered those people who stand in sessions where I'm facilitating, and for them, I then chose to have my first shot. And I, it's a choice. It's a choice. And in this instance, it was deciding that as much as I passionate about what I believe, I needed to decide if I want to put myself where other people were going to be at risk. And so I asked those who don't believe in the vaccine, who have, who believe it's risky, and we understand that none of us know the long-term effects, I asked you to give consideration not just for yourself and your power of choice, but really and truly the possible risks for other people. Thanks and God bless.
I just really want to thank you for, for sharing that with all of Barbados tonight. And again, like we said before, it's about educating persons and putting them in that right zone of making decisions on their own when it comes to these sort of events. But I really thank you for sharing it. It was a very powerful, powerful statement that you've just made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ford. I have been begged by a doctor to allow for one very short, and she promises short, presentation.
Always short. Thank you very much, Dr. Sonia Brown. I, um, I just want to add to the discussion. I think this is a beautiful forum, first of all, to get to the heart of the matter of COVID. I appreciate what Dr. Williams said about the effects on the economy and so on, but being on the ground and listening to patients and generally people out there watching social media, I am not hearing, I am not getting the sense that younger people out there are terribly interested in overwhelming the, the health system. I get an impression, while I agree with you, don't get me wrong, I think we need to delve into probably more deeply on the issues that affect people and what they are worried about. It has turned into, for some reason, to be a political game now because it's obviously fodder for politics. But I think we need to delve in more, maybe on a more personal level. Town hall meetings are great. For instance, I'll tell you what. I met three police officers at Parliament on Tuesday and none of them had the vaccine. Not one of them has agreed. And in this, this, in the discussion with them, I am hoping that I was able to convince at least one of them to do so. I think we need to start meeting with, with groups like that, police officers for one, not only in town hall meeting where, where they're among their peers. You're meeting nurses that have refused to get the vaccine although they give it. I think we meet, need to let them meet among their peers, that way they can discuss exactly what issues they have. With respect to gaining information, I think it's important for people to understand that everything on social media is not always correct. This is one of the biggest issues I am having. They're presenting data with no real basis for it or they find a site on social media that is really not reputable. This is one of the issues. Um, the issue of long-term data, to me, that's an obvious issue. We cannot have long-term data unless we have a long-term vaccination. But I think we need to get down more to the heart of the matter what is disturbing people on a national level in terms of taking the vaccine. There is a fear for adverse effects that every doctor here, I had my qualms about getting the vaccine. I had serious fears. At one point I was not going to get it, but with research and understanding, I was able to do so. Um, and I think that is one of the biggest issues that we have here. But my suggestion would be to meet people in groups and the side effects, yes, there are side effects. I had terrible side effects. But this did not even stop me from getting my vac- my second vaccine. So I think we need to hit the heart of the matter apart from the economics, which I agree with strongly. Apart from the economic issues, get down to the crux of what is bothering people mostly. Um, and I think the research, we need to, as a government and as a ministry of health, probably use social media a lot more. It does not have to be heavy information, but short clips, short advice, short information on side effects, adverse effects, what to expect, how the vaccine works. I think people tend to appreciate that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your in, your presentation this evening as well. Ladies and gentlemen, please do, if you wish, offer a round of applause. We need to encourage each other. We all, we all need to participate. I think the AG would like to make an introduction as well.
No, I, I just want to advise, um, we know, we, we got a lot of interest in this town hall meeting. There are a number of questions that are, have been posted to us. We were not able to address all of the online questions. I've spoken to Dr. George and the Ministry of Health will work with the Government Information Service and the Public Affairs Department. We will look to answer all of the questions that have been sent in online and we will post those so that although the questions were not raised here, everybody can have the benefit of the questions we did not get the chance to address. So um it was short, but there's a lot of information there and we, in the spirit of full disclosure, will attempt to answer all of the questions that have come to us.
Thank you, Attorney General. Madame Prime Minister.
Thank you. Thank you, moderator. Um, I just wanted to add as well, just to Dr. Brown's um comments just now, that we have been meeting with the various sectoral groups. Um, and the conversation is still continuing with the public health officials and all of the persons who are going to be impacted by COVID. Um, obviously we'll not get the uptake um as we would like all the time, but I think that because we are getting more information into the public domain, we're seeing a greater uptake of persons coming forward. Now with more vaccines coming, obviously I suspect that is going to change as well. And I think in the course of the next few um days and weeks, you will obviously have another rollout of information in relation to the Pfizer vaccine as well. And I just want to say, you know, it, it is easy to be critical of where we are right now because there are all of these different views contending. But the truth of the matter for those of us who have been at the center of this crisis from the very beginning, it has not been very easy to manage all of the various um issues as they arise. And, and every time we think sometimes that we've got it under control, then there's another issue that arises. So at the time when even we spoke about vaccination in the early stages, it, there was no talk of a variant. Um, the variant has entered the conversation of late. We were talking about getting herd immunity and making sure that like the majority of our pop- population, even if not everyone was vaccinated. And so we are in a place now where we are not, not just, we, we are working with what we have, but we also know that the historical data has shown that because, as was said earlier, Barbados has always been in a position where we behave like a developed country as opposed to a developing country. We have a responsibility as leaders, as all of the stakeholders, to do the right thing as well. So we know there will be people who will not want to take a vaccine. And that's okay. This, this discussion is also about choices. Everyone has a choice to make. Um, uh, just two years ago, I had a choice to make whether I decided to take chemotherapy medication or not. And truthfully, for those who knew me before, would tell you that I would never take any kind of um medication that was not natural or anything that was not natural. But I had to make a choice and thank God I'm here today. I don't know what is in the vaccines. I don't know what was in that medication. And many of the things that we take, antibiotics, I don't know that any of us know what's in it. But we trust the medical doctors, um, and sometimes, you know, some people may feel that we're trusting blindly. But the truth is, there is more evidence that we are seeing out there about the benefits than there are about the dangers. And I hope that a lot of what has been shared here has been beneficial to those who may have had doubts about what we are talking about and whether they should be vaccinated or even whether they should be tested. Um, and I don't think we talked as much about testing and maybe we need to talk about that a bit more. Some people are concerned about having the swabs and the impact obviously on their nasal passage. And I think we need to talk about that as well, the frequency of swabbing, so that we can reassure persons that all of these mechanisms that are being put in place in order to keep you safe are really being done to really preserve Barbados and to preserve the quality of life that Barbadians have come to enjoy. So again, I, I look forward to the third and the fourth session and if we have to do more, we will. Because the truth is that the only way we are going to get our people to understand what is at stake and what is truly at stake is if we continue to engage in this particular way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madame Prime Minister. We will now ask Mr. Carl Leach from the C2, from C2SAV, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, from the Barbados Workers Union. My apologies, from the Barbados Workers Union. Apologies, Mr. Leach, to give us our vote of thanks for the evening.
Hi, good evening every- Hello? Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the panel for coming here. You can hear me? Madame Prime Minister, Minister Ballstate, our Minister Abrams, the other members of the panel, thank you for being here. And also I would like to thank the audience, both physically here and online. If I may just say a word, even though I may not be an expert in this case, but when the coronavirus first hit in China, we were wondering if it will get here. Then it got here and we then asked for a vaccine. And now we are questioning the vaccine. I am no expert, but I can tell you I took the vaccine. And fortunately, I'm still standing here now to testify that I took the vaccine. So hopefully by the end of the day, and in forums such as this, we can demystify fact from fiction and help each other to understand the benefits of the vaccine. I would find it very difficult to think that they would make a vaccine to kill the world, even though that is one of the views that is being proposed on the internet. So I hope that in this forum and the other forums, we can understand what it is that we are working with and take the vaccine. I hope you get to your homes tonight in a peaceful manner and continue to stay safe and follow the protocols. Have a good night and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Ladies and gentlemen, again, we've reached the end of this evening's session. I just want to remind you that the following uh sessions, the following town hall meetings occur on the sixteenth of August at the Dayton Griffith School and on the eighteenth of August at the Combe Mer School. Both will be from five PM until seven PM and you can still register to be there in person or to attend by the Zoom link through the GIS Barbados website. Thank you. Be safe. Have a good evening.